2020. This meeting is being held remotely through the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform. Our chairperson, Chairperson of the Commission on the Arts and Humanities. And now I will call Alma. Gretchen.
Here.
Mariah. Mary Ann. Jose. Eric. Rona. Cece.
Here.
Good. Stacy? Cora?
Here.
Kimber?
No.
Okay, Alma? Mariah? Mary Ann? Jose? Derek? Rona? Stacy?
Here.
Kimber? See Kimber? Okay, I'll keep going until we've got a quorum. Alma? Mariah? Mary Ann? Jose? Eric? Rona? Okay, I'm here. We're just a little short in the corner. I'm gonna ask people if they're not being talked upon. I hear some ambient noise, like, yeah, that's better. Thank you. So, one more time, I'm looking through the numbers I see. Does anyone see Alma? Mariah? Mary Ann? I know she's coming. Jose? Derek? Okay, I'll call again after the public period. See, so, one second. I'm gonna read the land acknowledgement right now. Before we proceed further. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hopes of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Kutchank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that brings us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. Thank you. This is a regular meeting of the Commission called by the Chairperson of the Commission. It's held an open session in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. Notice was posted on the agency's website and on the Office of Open Governments online central meeting calendar. If we have any members of the public joining us today, we welcome you. Most particularly, I know that we have three people who've signed up for the public comment period. First, I'll call Tatiana Rice. Tatiana, are you with us?
Hi, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so my name is Tatiana Rice, and I am an attorney here in DC. And I am the founder of a social enterprise organization called Black Art House. So, when I moved here to DC about a year ago, I knew that I wanted to start investing my money in obtaining artwork from specifically black artists, especially since myself, as a black woman, I really identify with that kind of culture and wanted my house to reflect that as well. But unfortunately, there did not seem to be that kind of platform. And I had a really hard time trying to find black artists in DC. I was just Google searching and wasn't able to find it. So what had happened is I kinda sat on the idea for a bit of time. And after the wake of the George Floyd murders or murder happened, I had a lot of people contacting me, knowing that I was really interested in this. And I had purchased other pieces of art, true just artists on Instagram. They really wanted to be able to connect with the black community and have art from black artists and really being able to support that. And so what I ended up doing is actually just turning that into an actual organization. So what Black Art House does, as I mentioned earlier, is that we are a community of artists that are dedicated to promoting and selling art. So we have this online marketplace that we run. And the organization is dedicated to promoting those black artists' voices and making sure that their art is being put in front of collectors and everything like that. And then we also are able to meet bi-weekly, just to be able to find opportunities for them and really be able to network with other black artists across the country. So we work with six black artists currently, and that is a rotating cohort. They're from all over the country. Some of them are, one of them is from Pennsylvania, one is from California, one is from Detroit. But the collective is just meant to build that connection and being able to advance their careers. So I am here today just to be able to learn more about the DC Arts Commission and hopefully be able to hear more opportunities and, you know, in the future, being able to apply for grants and things like that. So I appreciate you all being here or having me here.
Thank you very much, Tatiana. I'm sure that people will be really interested to learn about Black Art House. I can think of a few people to connect to you right now. So thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
Next, I think we have Chris Nowm. Chris, are you there?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Hi, how are you, Chris?
Good, good. Thank you, thank you all for having me. Thank you, Kay. And thank you to the, to the executive director and commissioners. My name is Chris Nowm. I am co-founder of Listen Local First and represent the DMV Music Coalition Task Force. Here today to talk about the, to talk about the Facilities and Buildings Fund and Capital Improvement Fund and how we can find a way to redirect that money to save DC music venues. Five venues have closed since COVID. These are small venues. One's that regularly supports CHAZ and the soul community and supports the legacy of black music in DC. The Coalition of DC Musicians has introduced the Music Venue Relief Act, which has asked the council to provide overhead support for venues for the next six to seven months to prevent more venues from closing. When a venue closes, it normally disappears for good and upsets our entire music venue ecosystem and ladder. It does not get turned into another venue. It gets turned into condos. We're asking all parts of the government to work with us to try to find a way to prevent other venues from closing and try and find funding to support these venues through the rest of COVID. Capital improvements funding includes, including the facilities and building grants is a pot of money that we hope the Commission can use to save the day for our music community. A couple of weeks ago, the council voted to let the funding be used for mortgage and renovations. We know these funds have traditionally been used for improvement, large renovations, and acquisitions. But I think we can all agree that ecosystem, in this ecosystem, these funds would be more impactful if they are used to keep venues alive rather than pay for improvements. Small venues are the largest danger, right, the largest danger right now. And payments to these venues, according to the MVRA, would be made on a sliding scale. So a reasonable sum of money would go a long way in helping these venues. In general, for-profit venues are hurting the, hurting most. They do not get funding from the NEA or national foundations, so they do not have established regular donor lists. They rely on patronage and ticket sales. These businesses won't open until phase four, which is a long way away. It is our understanding that legally, these funds aren't restricted to being re-granted to only nonprofits because they do not come from the NEA. Under the DC Code, there seems to be no restrictions to being able to give these funds to for-profit entities, especially on an emergency basis. Our main ask is to portion these funds, say 1.8 million. You set aside to jumpstart music venue relief funding immediately for two months until the federal government passes the Save Our Stages Act, which will provide funding for venues to sustain through the summer of 2021. The stimulus funding, this stimulus funding should pass under either administration, but it probably won't happen until February. We hope that for these reasons, you all in the Commission can consider using part of the capital improvements funding to save DC venues. I have submitted an in-depth statement, all of you, through Jeffrey. And, and also that statement comes with an attachment of our legislation and letter that has over 1,100 signatures on it from the music community.
It's an impressive list of signatures, Chris.
Thanks.
I know it's an urgent need.
A big coalition has been working on this for a couple of months.
Yeah. Did you see that there's some national relief that was just passed yesterday or the day before for music venues?
It, uh, it wasn't passed, as far as, as far as I know. There's been some local governments, and I have a full list of all the cities across the country that have passed legislation to support. But as far as I know, the Save Our Stages and the money for venues has not actually passed.
There's something that just happened. I'll forward it to you. I don't want to speak because I'm not specific. But thank you for bringing this need to our attention. And we'll discuss it at the Grants Committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Aaron Myers?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. And I will be speaking in support of something that Chris just spoke about, which is the Music Venue Relief Act. I come to you really as an artist and an artist who is looking at what the future of our industry is going to be here in Washington, DC. This board and this body is not unfamiliar with the insurmountable amount of art and the quality thereof that's here in Washington and the many opportunities that we try to create for artists to showcase their art and to showcase their work. But I would like us to look at about a part of this ecosystem, which is the venues, and which this body has been able to partner with grantees throughout the years to be able to present their work and art. In many cases, the partnerships that have been vital in order for this to happen have been with the music venues in Washington, DC. I want us to consider for an, for a moment NSO in the Hood. With the venue, music venues closing here in Washington at the rate that they have been closing and without the relief that they need to have, it's, it's only safe to say that more of them will, will close. But without these venues being open, programs like NSO in the Hood would not be able to take place in the way that it has done. That means being able to reach intersectional audiences because of the closure of these particular venues. I think moreover, I would like us to look at the, these venues very similar to what Ford plants would be in Detroit or across the country. Once a Ford plant closes down, it's not just employees that work there directly, but it's the indirect industries that are also impacted and affected because of their closure. Chris laid out pretty easily, you know, what our solution is with the MVR Act and all the signatures we have on board. But we reached out to the council and the, for the council to show a support with, supporting this. And I think it would be an error if we were to wait until the federal government tried to step in in February to then show some type of support. I want to remind the council that, I mean, this, this commission that as we get ready to end the fiscal year, some venues have had fixed costs of $15,000 or more a month that they've been paying without any revenue. What motivation do they have to continue to operate at a, at a loss? When they may have already exceeded their extensions with their banks, with their landlords and their mortgages. So it's my idea and my hope that you will consider the, the recommendation Chris made earlier from a real standpoint because those who are in the visual arts and those who are in the performing arts, they all will be impacted by the closure of any more venues. And if we do not act now, we will be looking in five years, trying to get our music scene and ecosystem back to where it was before the pandemic. If you have any more questions, please reach out to me or, and Jeffrey does have my email and my information. And Chris sent you some documents that should support and give you information about the MVR Act.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. We do have that support material. Thank you, Aaron, for speaking up. This is a truly urgent need. You're right. Thank you all so much. I think you were told before, we don't really address the issues that you bring up at the time we hear you, and we will do it appropriately in committee meetings. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I had a issue, everyone, that I emailed you about. I had two. One is on the, oh, oh, first we have to adopt the agenda. And I think we have enough people now to have a quorum. Let me see, is Jose here? Derek? Uh, okay.
I'm here. Derek is here as well.
Derek is here. Okay, so we have a quorum. So can you all wave your hands for an adoption of the agenda? Let me just look and see.
Alma's hand is up.
I can see. I'm seeing. Okay, great. Thank you so much. And an approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 24th? May we approve those? Let me see. Does anyone against them or want to make any changes? Okay, hearing none, I'll assume that those are approved. Always skip right over that. Sorry, everybody. So for the chairman's report, I wanted to bring up an issue that, no, it's been a concern to some people. There are people on, or commissioners who have other, who have full-time jobs. And our four o'clock starting time is often a problem. I know even today, there are two people are late, not on the call yet because of work. And it's certainly okay to start later. And then once we got into that conversation, it seemed that some wanted us to change the day. And Monday was suggested. Technically, I cannot make a motion. So I wonder if someone else would make the motion, we second it, then we can discuss it. So if someone has to make the motion, make the motion for something specific to change.
My move is that we make the change to Monday meeting.
What specifically, Mary Ann, would you change it?
I would change it to Monday at 5:30.
Okay, does anyone second that?
Second.
Seconds it. So now it's on the floor and we can discuss it. How do you all feel about changing it to 8:30 on Mondays? Any thoughts? No conversation at all? Okay, golly. If there's none, then we can vote on it. How do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Gretchen?
Yes.
Okay, is Mariah there? Mary Ann?
Yes.
You proposed it. Jose? Derek?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Okay, my God, the majority. Okay, guys, our next meeting will be Monday, November 16th. And thank you. I hope that this is much more accommodating for the whole of our group. Thank you so much. I'll move on from that. I have another thing I'm gonna bring up, but that's gonna be under new business. So right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Haran, the chairman of the report.
Good afternoon, everyone.
The director's report.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon to our commissioners. I see a lot of staff people as well. And thank you to our three community members who came to testify. We appreciate hearing your thoughts and, and we will take your thoughts into consideration always. So thank you for making time to talk to us. I thought a good way to approach the director's report this time around was to do a quick sort of review of the year, the fiscal year. The new fiscal year began on October 1st. And, and it's the one-year anniversary for the agency's independence. We need an anthem. At some point, we do need an anthem to go along with that. But I'm going to just do a quick zip through our year in review and, and kind of put forward some thoughts that I have about, you know, the year ahead. And I won't read everything in the report, but I just wanted to take a moment at the very beginning to acknowledge, A, all the hard work that our staff has been doing to close out FY20 and to push forward in FY21. It's just amazing how much work and how gracefully our staff members approach the work with such commitment. So I want to start by thanking them. And then I also want to take a couple of minutes to acknowledge our new staff members. We have a few new hires. We've filled some, some vacancies. As you know, David Markey, who was our Arts Education Person, turned interim Senior Grants Officer, is now the Deputy Director for the Commission. He comes with a wealth of knowledge and experience in theater and arts, arts education and grant-making. So we're very happy to have him in this new role. We also have a brand new, as of a couple of days, a new Arts Learning Coordinator, Alorie Clark. Most of them are on, on camera, so you might be able to see them. I think Alorie is in David's office. She was most recently the Director of Arts Education and Community Programs at Step Africa. And her background is in theater, arts administration, and arts management. We have a new staff assistant, Andia Evans, who came to us from DC government, from the Department of Behavioral Health. She also has a deep interest in the arts and is very excited to have made this transition. She's been with DC government about five years, going on to six. Our Arts Program Coordinator, Alyssa Maru, has been on board as a contractor for a few months and is now officially in the Public Arts Department. Her background is in events production, and she's worked as a creative consultant. Most recently, she served as Director of Jupon Underground and managed the Cherry Blossom Festival, as well as the operations of Art All Night DC or, or Late Lunch in her recent past. Our very brand-new hire, new, new in the sense that it's even a brand-new position for CAH, is our Attorney Advisor, Robin McClure. He's also on the camera. She comes to us from the, from DC government as well, the Office of the State Superintendent of Education Agency. She was one of their staff attorneys doing contract work, transactional contract work, and, and working on data-sharing agreements. This is a position we've been really trying to create and have for a number of years. So we're very excited to have her on board. I also want to acknowledge our, our just stalwarts, rock-steady contractors, Ashley Bynum, Lauren Wilson, and Crystal Sate, who are also, may also be on the camera. Welcome, everyone, and, and I just wanted a chance to introduce them to the commission. Another piece that I think we've done well is hire two grant managers to help kind of respond to the findings of the Center for Effective Philanthropy Recommendation to sort of right-size grant managers' portfolios. Our numbers were just huge. Their recommendation, our numbers were about 120 grantees to each grant manager at the time of the study, and they, their recommendation is about 33, based on the, the sort of their dataset, what they normally look at. And it has gone down because more grant managers are on board now, which is a really good thing. It also touches upon another of their recommendations that we begin to build stronger funder-grantee relationships. And that this would be an important driver of grantee perceptions. So we're on our way on that front. I'll scoot down to budgets. As some of you may be aware, but it's worth kind of noting again, that we've had several sort of shortfalls and, you know, kind of adjustments that we've made, had to make to the budget last year. We've tried to do so with minimum impact on, on grant funds and on agency operations as possible. A total of about $2.5 million was taken from our overall budget in the two rounds of adjustments to revenue projections. And in, in general, we fared well. We haven't had to disrupt our grant-making based on these reductions in the budget. The, the big adjustment we've had to do last year, and we'll, we'll have to do even more so this year because our budget is moving almost, it's moving, not almost, it's moving completely to dedicated taxes and dedicated, dedicated tax review collection. In other words, we no longer have local funds in our budget. And so that means a lot more sort of monitoring of what, what comes in, what is collected to our budget and being a little bit, you know, more attentive to the with our, with our spending and, and kind of keep checking back to what's happening with the revenue collection. FY20 has taught us a lot in that regard. And so that's something that we have to do more of, this monitoring and following what's happening with our budget closely, so that, because we no longer have the sort of luxury of a budget that's front-loaded into our, into our coffers. Regarding grants, I know you guys have received the, the director's report. It's been posted, so I won't go through all the bullet points. I think we've adjusted well to the, to the shortfalls. We've managed to put forward relief and resilience funding to individuals and to organizations. We've managed to pivot well in terms of addressing, matching fund requirements and, and making timeline adjustments for some of our project-based grants and our general operating grant program. So I'm happy we were able to make adjustments as needed when the pandemic hit. We also successfully put out the NEA Cares Fund. We were among a few state arts agents that were able to go from application launch to, you know, to review, to award determination, and notification for these within a month. And that is just amazing. That's a lot of work that the grants team pulled with some help from the public arts staff members. And so we've, we received about 500, a little over 500 applications for individuals. We received, we were able to fund about a little over 300. And about 62% of those were new applicants to us, some of whom came back to apply for our regular grants. And we're also able to fund 29 organizations with NEA Cares funding. We were later in the year, as you remember, a few weeks ago, September, we were able to match NEA Cares funding levels to fund an additional 246 more individuals. As it regards the facilities and buildings temporary, temporary legislation that both our, Chris and Aaron referred to, we did receive news today that the mayor has signed the 90-day emergency bill. And so that puts us in a good position to think through some specifics around what the FAB awards look like and how we factor in relief funding through FAB. I'm assuming we will go back to the Grants Committee to put forward a plan for rent and mortgage relief for organizations in these coming weeks. And I think a good way forward might be to plan that rollout in connection to the deadline for FAB, which would be November 20th, to think through what the next steps would be that would synchronize with that so that we can align our efforts there. We've had a few successes in public art. We've had a few successes in public art. A number of projects that had been, you know, kind of rolling slowly forward were completed. The Chinatown Friendship Artway looks fantastic if any of you are driving through that side of town. This is a project that took about three and a half years to get off the ground. This is a conservation project. We partnered with DGS and DDOT to facilitate all the technical aspects and the traffic management, and we worked closely with the Mayor's Office of Asian and Pacific Islander Affairs to work with the community as well. We were very lucky in having the original architect, Mr. Alfred Liu, come back to work with, work on it, and work with craftspeople from local and from New York to restore it. So it looks absolutely amazing. We also have pivoted very successfully to online platforms for some of our public art programs. We were able to host two curatorial grants projects in our space, working with online curators were able to reimagine our space in an online platform. And I attended one of these two curatorial talks, and it was really fantastic. We've also successfully been able to respond to a late request from the Executive Office of the Mayor to create a mural commemorating the centennial of women's suffrage. And that mural was, had a soft launch today in accordance with the mayor's requirement that not too many people assemble. We were able to launch that near Anacostia, Anacostia, the Bus Boys and Poets by Anacostia As it relates to community and external activities for the agency, we've done a couple of really good projects, one with the Americans for the Arts, where we co-hosted the convention. We were able to celebrate Juneteenth and an initiative to fundraise for the Equal Justice Initiative in June at the Lincoln Theater, an online performance, a remote, you know, a few people were in the theater to perform. We were also able to get through our first NEA on-year application process. So first, for the staff, the current staff, we were able to put, I think, a good proposal together on this new aspect that the NEA has asked all state arts agencies to include in their application, which is a folk and traditional arts program. And our proposal is to include Gogo as the DC folk and traditional arts piece of it, and we're working closely with our Commissioner, Dr. Hopkinson, on this, and Howard University. So this is all of what happened last year. I'll just take a few more minutes to talk about the year ahead and some of the, you know, ideas we have. As you know, there has been a task force on equity and belonging that a few of the staff members and a few commissioners have been involved with, as well as community members. We have our Commission Chair and Commissioner Barry, two of our Commissioners, co-chairing this. And so we hope to emerge from part of that with a metrics that we can use for inclusion, diversity, equity, and access, that we then make useful in our grant-making practice and have that be a standard for grantees. We also need to do better collecting demographic data from our grantees and in connection to making these metrics work in the day-to-day. So this takes looking at such things as target audience, board composition, staff composition, and audiences, different audiences that would attend programs and events. So we will work harder at this demographic piece of it beginning now. We are also very aware of different barriers that stand in the way of folks applying for grants. This is a constant thing we have to tweak, but it's, you know, given the moment, it is that much more urgent to look at what these barriers are and what the equity choice points could be. And so I think a few things that we can work on sooner than later is looking at the option of paying panelists. We, this is something that was talked about a few years ago, and we weren't quite able to swing it for the agency. But to be able to, you know, engage artists, engage professionals in the field, a lot of whom work and also have gigs at times that panels are running, and so compensating them with an honorarium really does make sense. So we're going to see how our budget bears us out on this, but we want to make it happen. Also want to work harder at the implicit bias training for panelists, as that's the first building block in the grant adjudication process. It's important to have panelists that understand, you know, are able to look at applications with all their awareness on equity issues. We are rolling out a new website in about a month, and we also have thought about and are working towards creating instructional videos about the application process on the website or on our YouTube channel, mostly to, again, broaden access. Some people are visual learners, some people are, you know, are better at seeing it done than talking it through at a workshop, so we are already kind of working on scripts that would serve as instructional videos for the public. As it relates to community engagement, this is another thing that we would like to strengthen for what the agency does. We would like to, you know, look at ways that the staff can engage community, whether that is being embedded there in the community throughout the year, to conduct workshops or to just talk more generally about what the agency does and how the community can take advantage of some of our opportunities. And we'll be doing some programming on this new website, such as podcasts and, you know, marketing, more marketing, better marketing to reach community members. We've done a little bit of work in the area of stabilizing the agency, creating a sound sort of accountability structure, A, to have a good support for staff. Part of that was hiring a full human resource specialist to serve staff in-house. We've also created an employee handbook, and we'll focus a lot on employee relations in the coming year, I feel, to just have good management and evaluation processes in place. I also want to, I'm more committed than ever to look at growth opportunities for staff, whether that comes through professional development or just a sense of, you know, having them do new things in the agency so they, you know, get a sense of what else happens at this agency, depending on their interests. We are looking at finalizing the three-year strategic plan sometime next year, so we're going to be in the process of identifying a consultant to work with us for it. And then we're also already, we've begun working on our Public Art Master Plan that will sync up with the strategic plan to look at, you know, current issues and opportunities in placemaking. I also would love to see, given, you know, a moment to think about this, just staff and commissioners, a way of really engaging, you know, other opportunities than the normal ones that we usually do, which might be, you know, one of them is going to be this traditional arts program through the NEA, but also just taking advantage of opportunities that would bring our communities closer to, you know, funding and programming activities from the agency. So there is a, there's word on a Creative Aging Grants Program that might be launched for the arts, which would be a federal program soon, and so, and I think at some point, we used to have a Creative Aging Program for Seniors, Arts Program for Seniors. So in the interest of including all of our community members in the work that we do, we'll look into the possibility of applying for that, so we can have a grants program around Creative Aging. I will stop there. I think the challenges are detailed below as well. Really, a lot of it has to do with this fluid nature of our budget now and adjusting for the changes that we are experiencing. And that's it. It's been a challenging year. We've done good work, and we'll keep moving strong, I hope, into the coming year. Thank you.
Haran, that's an amazing report, you know, and I hope everyone takes the time to read it, because it's a lot to take in, and you've outlined a lot of terrific accomplishments and terrific goals. So thank you. We'll hold this, and we'll see how these goals work out.
Yes, please do. Hold your feet to the floor. Thank you.
I look forward to their working out. Next, I'm going to call on Cece for Finance Committee Report.
Hi there. I know we have a lot of grants to review, so I'm going to actually defer my time to Brian, who has a quick report about the latest update from OCFO. We acknowledged, Brian and I spoke, and we acknowledged that we haven't been convening the Finance Committee, so I'm committed to doing that before the next full Commission meeting. So Brian, if you can give us that report.
Great, thank you, Cece. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Brian Ender, I'm the agency's Resource Allocation Analyst. And the information that I wanted to give is with regards to the budget. As you know, the congressional submission was $38.7 million that was sent for CAH. Revised revenue estimates have come out the end of September.
Brian, Brian, before you go ahead, I'm just going to remind everyone to mute. I think people don't realize that if they're typing or writing, those noises are so close to the microphone on the computer that you hear every little thing, and I want to hear you very clearly, so please mute if you're not Brian. Go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Kay. So in the letter submitted to the mayor and Chairman Mendelsohn, the lead date is September 30th, CH or the city's anticipation of revenues is taking a downward turn, and in particular for CH, how it impacts us, is a $4.6 million reduction in the forecast. Now, I want to just make sure that everyone understands that it's just in the forecast. That doesn't mean that we've cut that out of the budget. It's just been restricted that we cannot spend until those revenues are actually collected. So what that means at this point is the agency, instead of having $31 million in its grants budget, it now has $26.7 million, $26 million in the budget. David Markey, the Deputy Director, as well as the Senior Grants Management Specialist, at this point, will go more into the details in terms of how the grants are allocated. It is still allocated in accordance to the thresholds that were established or the percentages. For example, FAB is budgeted at 17% of the total grant budget. NACOC is at 28%. The Arts and Humanities Cohort is 50%, and the Humanities Cohort is at 5%.
Thank you. Go ahead.
If I can just make one other quick comment, I want to thank everyone on this call, in particular, my colleagues here at CAH, as well as the Commissioners, for your hard push and your hard work with helping us with getting out the enhancement package. We were able to get out, as Haran already quoted or stated, over $2 million. It almost seems like Mission Impossible, but again, we rose to the challenge, we got those purchases out, and the actual invoices are being processed as we speak. So I have to, I would be remiss if I didn't say to this organization and to everyone from the public that the agency has worked hard to push out over $4 million within the last three to four weeks. So that should not be taken lightly, and it should be committed. Thank you.
Thank you, but I think we don't, I can be sure that we don't understand all the steps to take and how hard it is. Thank you to everybody. You're right to say so, Brian. Did you, were you going to call on David to say something, or is that the end of your report, Brian?
That is the end of my report, because as it looks in the actual agenda, I would assume that David's going to make some comments as the Grants Committee starts to speak.
I think you're right. Okay, we'll just wait and see. So thank you again so much. So as I understand that when we had local funds, those were front-loaded, and now they're taken away, so depending on sales tax and that's credit, is that the difference?
So yes, that's correct. When the city actually gives, when you have a local appropriation, they give you a mark, which is basically an allocation. It's subject to any revenue collections, it's no contingencies. It's basically monies that the city has already collected throughout the year, and that's the funding that the mayor has allocated to the agency to spend as its budget.
I just, I just made that point, because this is such a shift for us, and it's such a new way of thinking about our budget, so I just wanted to emphasize that, but thank you. I was probably being with them. I'm going to call on Alma now for Public Art Committee Report. I see you there, Alma. Do you hear me? Alma? If you, I might just go ahead and call on Lauren if I don't hear from you in a second. Okay, Alma's having a hard time communicating to us. Lauren, are you there? Do you want to pick this up?
Yes, I am here. I hear beeping, I don't know if that's Alma still trying to get in, but anyway, we have one grant recommendation, and that's for the Fiscal Year '21 Art Exhibition Grant Program, our Curatorial Grant. The Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Programs provide support for the development and public presentation of visual art exhibitions by district residents, resident curators through a grant supported by, for use of CAH exhibition space at 200 I Street in our gallery. Or if the gallery is unavailable, which it seems like it's going to be because of the COVID-19 health issue, an online platform. And we would be using the same online platform that we did, successfully used for Fiscal Year '20 grant exhibitions. And applicants must be individuals with prior curatorial experience. The grant is competitive with funding authorized from Neighborhood Arts Project. There is only one cycle. We recommended one, so this year we decided we would scale back and do one exhibition grant, just not knowing what '21 was going to look like in terms of, you know, budgeting and access to the gallery. We held a panel a few weeks ago, and Kimber was the Commissioner-Convenor, and through that, the Public Art Committee is recommending the applicant number two on the list as the project to be funded at $25,000. And if, I don't know if, if Alma's been able to join, but Kimber is also on as well, if there's anything else, but that's the, that's the report. I don't know if Kimber, if you want to call for a motion, and then I guess discussion would be appropriate.
Okay. Do you have a motion to put forward convener number two?
I'll second. This is correction, I'll second. Okay. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
But this is about artists in the community and their art that depicts Black Lives Matter, right?
It is, and this is, this is the school, so it's the pandemic, right, Lauren? This is...
No, so actually, so we're, you know, in accordance... No, so actually, so we're, you know, in accordance to our usual protocols, we would not be discussing the specifics of the application at this point. We would just be presenting the ranks as they are here and the recommendation from the committee. So the committee, after reviewing all of the applications and the recommendation of the panel, chose number two because they felt this exhibition was more fully developed and better able to be executed as scheduled in February. It involves many DC artists, including emerging artists, which was the main goal of this grant program, and offers an educational programming component. So that's the, that was the recommendation of the committee to bring forth to the commission.
Okay. Well, it's moved and seconded. Is any discussion on choosing this recommended hurdle?
This is Cece. I have a question. I guess the obvious question is why was the recommendation for the project that scored quite significantly lower than the one previously? I understand, like, if, if the panel thought it was the best project, wouldn't we refer to that?
Lauren, you want me to jump in on this one?
Sure, sure.
I think in multiple discussions afterwards and then with the Public Art Committee, we looked at number two, and that is what we're moving forward because the exhibition was more fully developed and better able to execute within the time. It also involved many DC artists, so it was able to involve a number of artists merging and throughout the community.
Right. But is that the panelists' recommendation or was it the committee's recommendation?
So what you see here is the panelists touring, and then the Public Art Committee, the committee actually reviewed the timeframe and the ability to execute of a timeframe that we have in terms of when the installations would have to happen, and moved forward with the second one.
So, so the reasoning for picking the second one is because more artists would be included and?
And that the art was actually ready to be installed, that the actual art was ready.
And then the first project wasn't ready or wouldn't be ready?
It wasn't ready. They just not even complete. Project idea.
They were, they presented ideas, concepts.
Okay, I mean.
I understand what you're saying, Cece. It is unusual. Since we usually, if there's the highest score, we go, we go with the highest.
I just, you know, we, we make a point of saying that we rely on the panels and that we are a peer-reviewed, you know, an agency that values the peer review. You know, I don't, I don't want to discard what or disregard, excuse me, what the panel, what the committee is saying, but it's one thing if they were close, but this is not a close score. And this isn't, I mean, the reasoning that was given by the committee, if it was not also raised by the panelists, also somewhat gives me pause. I'm not, I'm not necessarily against the idea. I just, I feel like this could set an, kind of a bad precedent for us to basically ignore the, the recommendation of the panel. I know it is within our purview to, to make these decisions, but we, we have not in the past sort of made this kind of, at least as far as, as long as I've been on the, on the commission, like, we don't, you know, we don't cherry pick the projects that we think are best. We, we rely heavily on the, on the recommendations of these panelists, which, who are essentially experts and people that we value for their input. That's just my thought. I'm very hesitant.
And maybe Lauren should speak to this, or Alma, if she can get on. I think that in public art, it's a little different than the regular grant categories, meaning there's physical requirement for things to actually be executed. And that might have had something to do with the practical decision to go with number two instead of number one, as there was more art ready in number two than the number one. But I'm just saying that I was sat in on the committee conversation. Lauren, do you want to speak anymore to that?
Yes, I don't think there was a, you know, a thought of what was better, what was worse. Both of them were, were very, you know, interesting and compelling projects. If we were doing our usual two, we would have, you know, probably selected both of those. The recommendation would have been both of those. But given the, the amount of work, which the panel also knew was required for the number one, it was not, and based on the information that was submitted, it was not fully developed and a lot of unknown factors. And so it would require a tremendous amount of work to get it to the position where it would be available. So that was where the, where the, even the panel in those discussions, they understood that. They just didn't go back and change their scores. And that information was also brought back to the committee. Kimber was part of the, convened the panel and was also spoke about this and advocated about this during the committee meeting. It's about wanting to make sure, it's, it's about wanting to make sure that we are supporting, you know, this in a positive way and ensuring that they have a project ready to go. This exhibition is scheduled to go up in February, and there's frankly, just not a lot of time to, you know, pull a lot of the concepts together. So it was the thought that, you know, and Kimber can articulate more on it, that the, the second one had far more artists involved, far more DC artists involved, far more emerging artists involved. And that was, you know, in many ways, the underlying goal of this program to provide curators and emerging artists the opportunity to have exhibition experience.
Let me jump in. Cece, I appreciate, I really do appreciate your thinking here. And my understanding might be, you know, sort of segmented in a way, but my sense is that panelists would score applications, but the committees would put forward the recommendations. And so, you know, and a lot of it, of course, relies on the panelists' scores. So I think maybe, I don't know if that distinction is helpful to think about, that the recommendations would come from the committee.
Right. Thank you. I, I recognize the distinction there, and I recognize that the, the committee does make recommendations based, you know, it is the committee that makes the recommendation, but usually there's, you know, the data at least backs it up. I, again, I, not to disregard what the committee is saying, I think, given the disparity in the scoring, that perhaps if there was criteria that was not considered in the scoring, that perhaps it speaks to a need to adjust the criteria or something. I just, you know, if you're just looking at it objectively, which I know that we, we do and we don't when we make these decisions, but again, this is a 13-point disparity. If the panelist was told about these other criteria or these other factors to consider, and they still scored it this high, clearly they see also some, some validity or some, they clearly saw something in this project. So again, I, I just, these are just concerns that I have that if, if we are, again, I'm not trying to disregard what the committee is saying. I know that they're, they're looking at this very carefully as well, but that's a stark difference.
If I may say, if I may say one thing, you know, the, and Kimber, you can add on to this, the panelists verbally stated they felt that the number two was ready to go. Perhaps in hindsight, you know, a second round of scoring would have, would have been in line, but the, the verbal concept after the panel was that they felt that number two was ready to go. It just was not, it was not rescored.
Okay. I would even go farther, Lauren, to say there is robust discussion amongst the panel around additional clarification and development that the first one would need for them to feel like there was a level of comfort. So we actually talked a lot about what, what feedback could we give to them and make sure that they like bring in their resources to make sure that that was developed. So we had a long conversation after the scoring around how that could be done to support the completion of that project.
By the way, if I may, this is Jose. I was part of that, I'm part of the art, Public Art Committee. And one of the things that we felt when we saw the actual presentations of all three of them, that number two, ED, was ready to go versus number one. And Lauren and Kimber were very clear as to that the discussion had been had at the panel level. And one thing that we wanted was to try to support, or us as a committee, us as a commission, to support a bigger group of people, especially when, and God knows, we're not coming out of this pandemic by February, but with something that is bringing, and when you see the actual art, artworks or part of the presentation, you can see that this will bring a lot of joy to people. It's a lot of, of all types. It's more artists involved, and it's emerging artists, and it's stuff that will speak to the heart. I, I stand behind the committee with this decision because we feel that we are reaching a bigger spectrum of people with the possibility of also virtual tours or talks that they offer to do also. So there is a whole, and we as a commission, like, we sometimes decide to go in the majority, which I like and I support. I would rather see more people being supported than expanding so many dollars at the top. So I think by doing this, even though there were three categories, and the second was selected, we are supporting more people. And it will, it, it will be joyous at the time this comes. So.
So, thank you, Jose. I appreciate that. I think, I know we have a lot on the, on the agenda. So I just, my last comment, I guess, is that I'm hearing that one of the many reasons that the project two was picked was that it was, there was a readiness to it. So if project readiness is indeed a factor, then perhaps that's something that can be factored into the criteria in future, because it sounds like, among other reasons, that's something that, you know, was taken into consideration for picking that project. And, you know, I don't know if it's been in the criteria before. I'm not sure what the criteria are, but just something to consider for future projects.
I agree with that.
Thank you, Cece. We, we will be sure to be articulate that better. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should bring this to a vote. Kimber? Yes or no?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Thank you. Stacy?
Yes.
I think it's quite a few, did you hear enough of that?
No, I'm abstaining. I just literally just logged in, so I didn't hear any of the conversations. I'm abstaining. Thanks.
Cece?
Yes.
There's some other noise. Was someone? There's a terrible squishing sound. Like wind blowing or? Okay, everyone mute, except for Cece and me. Cece, how do you vote?
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Rona?
Yes.
Derek?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Jose?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary Ann? Mary Ann, can you unmute to vote? Wave your hand, yes or no?
I said yes.
Okay. Gretchen?
Yes.
And Alma, have you been able to come on? Alma? Well, that's a shame, but it does pass. And Cece, I bet you brought some great points in this certainly about making sure everybody knows readiness matters. But I think it's also interesting that is, I mean, I'd say 99%, you know, we really do rely on the panels, but we do have room for discussion and for some change. So it, it's, we have voices. We have a purpose. It's sort of, it's good to get in those discussions and mix it up a little bit, I think. Next, I'm going to call on Grants Committee, and that is Gretchen.
All right, everybody. If you need to stretch, do it right now because I'm going to need your undivided attention so that we can go through the spreadsheets and everything. I do want to firstly say thank you to the grant staff. They did a phenomenal job getting the, working through the system and getting things out, because you got to remember, everybody said it couldn't be done, and they did it. So thank you so much for getting all of the grants out on time and getting them through the system. Okay, we're going to, I'm going to let David speak first, but then we're going to have the actual grants managers for these two particular grants, which are East of the River and the Projects Events and Festival Grants, present their own recommendations. I do want you to know that the entire Grants Committee met. We have reviewed this more than once, and we are all in support of the recommendations that the grants, grants team managers have, are about to make. David?
Hi, Gretchen. Thanks. I'm going to be brief. Again, I just want to echo what was said, that we lost a month at the beginning of the summer, but yet we managed to churn out 32 panels. And we're here on October 15, just a couple of weeks, you know, you know, later than we usually announce all of our awards. So again, thank you to everybody on the Grants Team and the agency who helped. And I'm going to turn it over to Khalid for East of the River, and then Robert and Travis for Projects Events and Festivals. Thanks.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Khalid. And I'll go over the East of the River Program. And I'll start with the grant description. I'm not going to read it verbatim, but it's towards resident organizations located. That's. Well, 25% of new applicants versus FY20. We have an FY21 that were, and two of those applicants were deemed ineligible because of their location outside of Wars seven and eight. EOR has previously had two cohorts, one for Wars one through six service organizations, and one cohort that was resident organization is seven and eight. So the change this year was we did not offer the cohort of services for Wars one through six and to provide services in War seven or eight. The budget allocation that would be as for recommendation is going to be 706,000. It would have the lowest amount per requested, 65% of the requested amount is going to be the floor of an FY20, that's 839. And it's not really lower than FY21. I should say FY20, FY19, and FY18. 35% of each of those would have to come, 35% of that total amount of 839 was to go to Wars one through six and so forth down the line. So they all are a little less for just War seven and eight, but that was the allocated budget for East of the River. We have one panel this year, just the residents organizations at seven and eight. The applicants were 32. A total we had of new applicants were eight applicants. And we had about, I know this is not on here, but five applicants who did not return this year. And it's usually funded fatigue for the smaller organizations. The way we did the allocation of funds, as you will see in PEP I and PEP O, we took the raw score and did that over 100. And then we looked at the percentage of their, of their ranking, and times that, times their requested amount, and that's how we got the allocation, and we made some adjustments there. So at that point, I'll just let it go to the Excel spreadsheet. spreadsheet. All right. So you'll see in the recommended amount, which is, well, I can't see the column there. All right. So the scenario, which is the recommendation, you'll see the 35,000, and the difference here, and when I said, we took the score over 100, and we took, got the percentage, and then use the percentage to multiply it times the requested amount of 35,000, and that's how we come up with the 35,000. However, in the first four organizations, if you were in the 90 percentile, you were given the full award of 35,000. And therefore, it just went down at that point. You can see each one, I should say, according to the one that has the organizational budget of 305 million. That is not a mistake. That's a part of a large collection of buildings, and so it's not represent, representative, representative of the specific site that is applying for that money, because they could not delineate for that site. So that's not a mistake there. Then you'll see the white one, that's not really highlighted there. That was because that was ineligible. And then you have the last four at the bottom, which are, I should say, the last five at the bottom there. You'll see that those are the ones who are not, would be not funded. So we are funding about 80% of the entire people who are applied, and you'll see the lowest percentages at 65. No organization would be getting less than 65% of their requested budget. And that is truly a plus. We used, in, in the past years, East of the River have gotten some organizations towards the bottom, had gotten 5,000, 10,000, 7,000, and that was about 20%, 30% of their budget. And they just have to chop those, their services down to try to do that program. So it's really good that they can maintain that 65%. We can maintain that 65% threshold, provide them support to, and resources to implement their program. And I would say that would be all.
Thank you, Khalid.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna make a motion first, Gretchen.
Yes, a motion to accept the recommend, whoops, where are we? A motion to accept the recommendation of the Grants Team and the Grants Committee.
Does anyone second it?
I second it.
Thank you, Jose. And so now is there discussion? No discussion. Well, I think, I think it's, you know, this is really a great, great opportunity. You know, I know Khalid, you said you were so happy that so many were getting such a big percentage of their amount. I think we'd be really proud of that. I'm gonna call the roll. Alma, I see you there.
Yes.
Okay. Gretchen?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jose? Jose? Derek?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes, Jose, yes. Sorry. Jose, yes.
Okay, yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cora? Kimber?
Yes.
Terrific. That's just fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay, Gretchen, up next.
Next, we have Projects Events and Festivals, and this is gonna be done in two parts, because it's organizations and individuals. Who's talking first?
So, one, my name is Robert Nunez, and I'll be presenting the Project Events and Festivals for Organizations. I will say that with Project Events and Festivals, a lot of the language between the organizations and individuals will be the same, or be very similar, but I'll talk specifically for the organizations. So the Project Events and Festivals, or PEP O, is a grant program that supports nonprofit organizations who execute projects that promote arts and humanities activities to a diverse range of communities within DC. The application is open to arts and humanities organizations and non arts, arts and humanities organizations. Our, the agency, we seek grant applications from qualified organization program providers who present exemplary projects in the arts and humanities. Organizations may apply for project support up to $15,000, and there is no match required for PEP, both PEP programs. For the differences between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, in the spring of FY20, and the distributed survey of all grantees to determine the anticipated value of the project-based grants for FY21, with a robust response, the survey identified high value in participation for PEP O. In an effort to reduce the budget for FY21, just playing things out, the Grants Department made two key changes, one of them being the maximum requests being decreased from 20,000 to $15,000. The other is the total budget allocated for the PEP O program was reduced by 40%. For the number of applicants, we saw a small increase in numbers of applicants of this, for FY21. Last year, we had 41 applications, and this year, we had 50. I will say, one was deemed ineligible, so 39 organizations were reviewed by the panelists. As you see with the allocated budget amount, we are requesting 301,449 for PEP O. In the past, in this, you know, again, going off of the percentage with the 40% decrease of what's being allocated for PEPs. With the number of applicants, we had two panels. The split was 24 for the first panel, and nine of the applicants were funded from last year, FY20. And then the panel two, we had 25 applicants, eight were funded in FY20. Of the 49 applicants that went to the panels, 21 were new, and Commissioner Gary Younger was in our first panel. Let me go to the next page. So, the allocation of the fund and the justifications. So how we came to the funding recommendations? We used the raw scores, and we converted to scores out of 100, and with the percentage based off of the applicant's score relative to the top-scoring applicants. For the top-scoring applicants, they did receive the full amount, but everyone else underneath was that percentage to the top-scoring applicant. Awards are based on percentages of the requested amount, and not funding less than 30% of their requested amount. Both panels did have a lot of high-scoring panelists. So when you see the scores, the, out of 100, you'll see the average being in the 70s and higher, which can easily happen. It just depends on the spirit of the panel. And the spirit of the panel was high-scoring applicants. So when, when we see the scores for the panel one, there, there was a clear breakpoint at applicant 12. There wasn't a tie between 11 and 12, but 12 and 13, there was a 1.27 point variance between the tie of 11 and 12. For the second panel, there was a clear breakpoint from 11 and 12, being 1.25 for the variance.
Can you show the spreadsheet, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's see. It's a little bit bigger. All right. So what you see right now is our panel one. And as I said, with the variance on row 13, which is the 13th applicant, that is where the variance is 1.67. And as I was saying, in the, with the spirit of the panels being high scores, if you look on the scores out of 100, I just see a lot of it was just very, very high. And part of it could be how well the applicants did, but then also looking at the notes, it looked as if it was just a lot of high-scoring applicants. And then, when you see the recommendation amount, that is how, as I said, the first person would get the full amount, and then everyone else underneath would get a percentage as, let's call, from the top-scoring applicant, with how they scored. And then, if you go to the second panel. So as you see, same thing with the variance from 11 and 12. There's a 1.16 variance between those two applicants. And then similarly, with the scores out of 100, a lot of it was really, really high. So between looking at the variance, what's funding is available for PEP, and even the panelist notes, just to be safe, this is how we came up with the recommended amount.
Any other comments? Thank you.
We've gotta put a motion on the floor first, Gretchen.
No, no, I was asking him if he had anything else just to add.
I see.
Oh, no, that's all.
Thank you. Okay, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Grants Manager and the PEP's team for this particular grant.
I second. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call on everyone. Alma? Alma, how do you vote? Do you wanna wave, yes or no? I can't hear you.
Alma, you can do.
I can see, but I can't hear you, Alma. So either go up or down.
Maybe someone can unmute her landline. She can, she can respond there, because she is connected to her landline on the phone.
Um, I'll go ahead.
Ending in one.
Yeah. I'll come back. Gretchen?
I just unmuted her, so she can, if it's that.
Okay, Alma, can you hear me? Can you nod your head if you can hear me, Alma? Okay, Gretchen?
Yes.
Um, yes. Wait, did I just hear Alma say yes? Okay, Mary Ann?
That was her.
I have no feedback.
Yes.
Okay. Jose?
Yes. Alma, we're voting, yes or no?
She voted.
I'm asking you, Jose, will you vote?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Thank you. Rona?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Kimber?
Yes.
Great. It's a majority vote. Next, Travis.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, alrighty, so up next, we have the Project Events and Festivals for Individuals. And the quick description of the grant program is the PEF Grant Program supports individuals, district residents who execute projects that promote arts and humanities activities to a diverse range of communities within the District of Columbia. CAH seeks grant applications from qualified individual program providers who present exemplary projects in the arts and humanities. And for this grant, there are no matching requirements. FY20 versus FY21. In Spring 20, Grants Department dispersed a survey of all grantees to determine the anticipated value of projected, project-based grants for 21. The response to the survey identified high value in participation. In an effort to reduce the budget for FY21, the Grant Department staff made two key changes. And this is for, and again, so the maximum request has been shifted from 10,000 to 75,000, and the total budget allocated was also reduced by 25%. There was a small increase in the number of applications from FY20 to 21. Last year, there were 67. This year, we had roughly 77. All of the 77 applicants who did apply were deemed eligible. As far as the allocated budget amount, we're requesting 308,983. That's just $2,000 over what was allocated for PEF individuals. But we get to the spreadsheet, I'll show you that we were able to borrow that, that percentage of funds from PEO, because Robbie had a, just a small pot of leftover money. So we were able to compensate with the PEO funds. There were a number of three panels. Each panel, panel one had 25 applicants, and both panel two and panel three had 26. There were a total of 19 of that 77 totals. 19 of them were new applicants to this grant. I, myself, was the grant manager, and for panel one, we were able to have Ms. Stacy Lee Banks convene that panel. Panel two and panel three both did not have a commissioner. Alrighty, so as far as the rankings and the justification, the goal was to fund approximately 60% of applicants in each cohort to remain within the budget. The grant manager identified as a clear cutoff between each cohort. Then the reference notes from each panel was reviewed to, and, and then sent to the Grants Committee, where we took recommendations as well. So based off of the funding recommendations, panel one will be funded up to about 53%. Panel two will be funded at approximately 57, and panel three, just around 63%. Similar to EOR, East of the River, and PEO, the allocation of funds were, were very similar. Raw scores were converted into scores out of 100, and the percentage based on the applicant's score, then relative to the top-scoring application. So we, for the most part, none of, none of the applicants in this funding scenario were funded less than 74%. As far as the difference in cohorts, cohort two and cohort three, as you see, both were right around, well, all of them, for the most part, were right around 60%. But cohort two and cohort three had a more clear break in, in the variance at one and three. Cohort one had a smaller variance, but when we get to the spreadsheet, I can actually explain as to why that is. Alrighty, so what we have, first, we have panel one. And originally, the cutoff that, if you were to look down at rank 16, the variance is right around 2.29. That was the clear cutoff that was originally discussed, trying to stay within budget and stay at that 5, 60% mark. However, we were able to, or I'm sorry, the, we, we, rank 16 was not originally in the funding recommendation, because of the large break in the, because of the large cutoff. But because they were in Ward eight, and based off of Ward, and you know, Ward Equity, and, and after discussion with the Grants Team and Grants Committee, we decided to add applicant number 16 to ensure that, that East of the River is indeed being, you know, represented in, within this cohort. to ensure that East of the River is indeed being, you know, represented within this cohort. Do you mind going to panel two, David? And again, panel two and panel three were a lot more clear. If you look down at rank number 15, the cutoff is right at, it's a one-point cutoff, so that one was a little easier to stop based off the variations, and again, keeping in mind that of the budget and the 60% goal. And lastly, at panel three, panel three was a lot more clear as far as point variance. If you were to go down to rank number 17, there is a larger three-point gap, so that one was a lot clearer to stop it off or to cut it off there. Again, I think, for the most part, panel two and panel three were pretty clear as far as the point variance. Panel one, our explanation was more so just to include an East of the River applicant within that cohort. So, we did, we were able to squeeze them in and still had the funds available to do so. That is it. Yes, ma'am?
I noticed that there's also a three variance, and there were larger variances on the previous two grants. Can you explain why at 10, there was a three variance, but you dropped down to 18? Was it because you had the funding?
Yes, we did have the funding. Again, we, both Robbie and I were, based off of the funding recommendation or the funding that PF did have, me and Robbie both split that. So, based off of the funding, we saw that his percentage was being that he was with organizations. Of course, his numbers would be a little lower, being that they can request a little more, but I had more money in my pot to be able to push the cutoff a little further down, just around 60%, just because we did have the available funds to do so.
Thank you, you did a wonderful job, wonderful.
Thank you.
Let's put a motion on the table and then see if there's conversation. This is Gretchen, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Grants Manager and the Grants Committee. Okay, is there any discussion about these?
I didn't want to mention that I was the convener for the PAF side, and that was Travis's first panel, and he did an excellent, excellent job. So, I was really very proud of him.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Just wanted to say that, that's my decision.
Thank you.
Worth saying, for sure.
I definitely appreciate it.
I think you can see the thought that went into the presentation. Okay, well, vote. Alma? Gretchen?
Yes.
Mariah? Oh, she's not here. Mary Ann?
Yes.
Jose?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Rona?
Yes.
Cece?
Yes.
Quanise? Yes. Stacy?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Timber? Timber. She may not be with us. Okay, the majority passed this vote, so that's terrific. Thank you, thank you, Gretchen, thank you for your committee and all the hard work. Now, we'll go to new business. And I do have a piece of new business. As you all know, the task force has been meeting, and when they have certain recommendations, we will be bringing them to the Commission to discuss and accept or not. And lining up with our own stated values, as we heard from Haran's report, and I think we all just know what our goals are. We do want to do work around equity. And so, I will read to you the statement as a recommendation from the task force. The DCCAH Task Force on Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging recommends that the DCCAH conduct a survey in the next two weeks of all FY20 organizations that were grant recipients to gather information about their work advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion in programming, community engagement, and internal practices. Their responses will provide valuable insight to us, the Commission, as we prepare to ensure that our practices and able resources be fully accessible to all communities. The survey responses will be used solely for internal research purposes and will not be made public. The coded survey will be ready for distribution next week, can be administered through Survey Monkey, and will require minimal staff time to execute. So, would someone make the motion to adopt that proposal?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion about moving ahead with this particular survey?
Kay?
Yes?
This is Alma on the phone now.
Yes, I hear you.
I would really love a little more background or information on...
Well, okay, let me try to give you some. The survey is short, but it asks questions that allow the recipients to tell us what their circumstances are in terms of the demographics of their workplace, their audiences, their staffing, who they serve. And if there isn't very much diversity, it gives them a chance to talk about any plans they have to make diverse, more diverse results. It's not meant in any way to be punitive. We're not saying that people will stop getting grants or only get grants dependent upon their answers. It's a chance to collect data so that we have a base and we have knowledge of what the reality is in the community of grantees. And I think that it gives them the implication and suggestion that these are the things we care about. And I think that depending on the results, we'll be able to shape our guidelines for next year to further reflect our values. I think that, and I'm just saying this, it's what I've heard in discussion, that we understand that some organizations may have some good intentions and can't on a dime change things. But if we get a base level now of what the circumstances are, as time goes by, we will be able to see what's what. And at some point, we may in fact make requirements along the lines of certain equity requirements for granting. But we have to start someplace in getting this information now as good as any time.
When you talk about the diversity, where, what kind of diversity are you looking at, staff, board?
All of it, all of it. And in staff, not just staff, but high-level staff as opposed to full staff?
Yeah, Kay, this is Gretchen. I think this is something we must do now. So many organizations have already done this, and we're a little behind the ball on this one, so I'm really glad to see us doing this. And I think it's really going to be able to help us when we review our guidelines and applications for FY22. It'll give us something to really look at and hone in on when we review our guidelines and applications. So, I'm really happy to see this.
Are there any more questions or discussion? It was helpful, I think, that the task force has some experts on surveys that put the survey together for us. That saves us some time and thought. If there's nothing else, I'm open, but we'll take a vote. Timber? Cora?
Yes.
Adely? No, she's not here. Stacy?
Yes.
Quanise?
Yes.
Cece? Rona?
Yes.
Derek?
Yes.
Thank you. Jose?
Yes, yes.
Mary Ann? Mary Ann?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Gretchen?
Yes.
Alma?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. So, thank you all very much. I think this will be a good thing to do, and we'll start right away. Next, is there any more new business?
I have a question.
Okay.
Sort of new business. I might have missed it, because I came in late, I had another event. But now that Haran has went through the public hearing process, I'm really interested in learning what her vision is moving forward with the Commission. I don't know if you already speak about that during your executive report.
I think it was entirely, she had a very long report, and half of it was the great accomplishments of last year, and the other half was the vision and the goals for next year. So, in the interest of Tom Quanise, I'm sure she'd love to talk to you about it, but also, she articulated some link to that, and it's written in her report also.
I didn't...
Can she send it out? It was sent out to everybody before the meeting.
I saw it moving forward and like, so, but I didn't see like an actual vision. So, if you could send that a full vision, well, maybe probably like a 100-day report or like something that we can see and look at and keep benchmarks along the way, I think that would be helpful for us as commissioners, so that we can support you while you're going through, you know, your first official, quote-unquote, official, you know, ofness of being the ED.
You're absolutely right. We talked about holding her feet to the fire and checking in on her. Support you, and we send it back out.
I'm happy to do it, Quanise. This is sort of a shorthand report right now that you would have in hand. So, I'm happy to flesh out some more and send it back through.
Awesome, great.
That'd be great, Haran.
Second thing, I know some inconsistencies when it comes to materials being sent out, like a day before, two days before. I was trying to figure out if there's an actual way we can get it consistent, because I know my schedule is busy, I know a lot of other people in here, their schedule is busy. But it'd be great if we can say, hey, two days before, three days before, four days before, you're going to get it, because it's been really inconsistent the past couple of months.
So, here's what I would say in response to that, yes. And I think the effort also has to be that we pull our committee meetings to a week before the full Commission meeting, so that the reports and everything can be done and all the conversations can be had. I think it makes sense to pull back to the schedule that we used to have, which is all the committee meetings happening a week before the full Commission meeting, so that everything is put together and sent out with at least three or four days for the commissioners to digest the materials.
Yeah, that would be beautiful. Thank you.
It's worth towards that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's just every chair of every committee make sure that they commit to that and do all the coordination.
I'd also like to say, thanks for having the grant managers present. I think it's lovely to see new faces, and it's also lovely to actually like, get them to like, talk about what they do. So, I really appreciate, can we continue moving forward having the grant managers present to us? Because, I mean, I love David and Haran, but I love seeing the grant managers do it.
Yeah, I think we all agree with you.
Totally agree with that. That was nice. Thank you, everyone.
And guys, it's worth pointing out that Travis, as you know, has transitioned, you know, kind of come over from another role within the agency, from the front desk. He used to send commissioners the weekly newsletters, and he was just the bright face of the agency at the front of the office. And now, he's a grant manager, and he's rocking it. So, that's, it's a transition that we're very excited about, yeah.
And though many of you don't know it, but the grant managers have to present to the Grants Committee. So, they're presenting a lot lately.
Yeah. Yeah, it's all good. Any more new business?
I wanted to ask if we could get the link to the meeting, the morning of the meeting or the day before, because I had the time trying to find the email that had the link in it that was sent a week or two ago. So, if we could just get another reminder with the link for the meeting, the day before or the day of, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I think...
Mary Ann, because when you are SVP, it does just end or disappear. Basically, you have to look at your calendar in your Outlook to be able to find the meeting again.
I don't, yeah. So, I would just...
Some people don't know how to do that, so I think it is helpful to have it go out again.
Yeah, we can send reminders. Yes, Mary Ann?
Thank you.
Good idea, Mary Ann. Any other new business? Okay, guys, we did go over, but not too bad for a full agenda. So, thank you for sticking with us, and we'll see you on Monday in November. I think the 16th. Okay, see you then. Bye, thank you.